Yeah, we don't need to do Seeker. We have to do Seeker for the new business resub and then the map amendments, but everything else we've already done Seeker. And if I need to, I'll try to walk you through that. Yeah. I asked them to get the script, that's all I knew. I don't miss anything.
Oh, here it is. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Syracuse Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so we will begin our meeting. We will pause for just a moment to take care of some business before we get to our public hearings for this evening. The business ahead of us, of course, is the minutes from our previous meeting. Those minutes were distributed in advance to the commission members for our April 15th meeting, and we will now consider action on those minutes if there's a motion for action.
We move approval of the minutes of April 15th, 2025.
Second? Thank you. Discussion on this motion. If not all in favor of the motion for approval of the minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Minutes are approved, and we will move on to tonight's business. Just by way of order here for the public hearings that we'll be in tonight, if you are unfamiliar with our process, each application will be announced by someone on the staff, and after that announcement, we would ask that the applicant or the representative come to the podium in the center of the room, provide your name, address, and a brief summary of your project. Following any questions from the commission members, we will offer an opportunity to the public to speak in favor of the application, and likewise, another opportunity for those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. And where comments are offered in opposition, we will offer the applicant an opportunity to address those comments. If you're speaking either for or against an application, we ask that you keep your comments concise as possible, probably in the order of three minutes or thereabouts, so that those who wish to speak can be heard. With that, there are no changes to the agenda that was distributed, is that correct, so we can proceed? Okay.
That's correct. The only caveat is we may push the resubdivision at 236 Shonard Street down the agenda slightly, but we'll try to manage that as best we can. First up, under old business this evening, is a project that we've titled the Rescue Mission Exchange Building Project. It's two projects in one. It's a resubdivision with a companion major site plan review. The applicant has obtained two area variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals at the March 20th, 2025 meeting. The Board of Zoning Appeals evaluated the project and issued a negative seeker declaration for the unlisted action, so we do not need to do Seeker. The applicant will just present to the commission, and the commission will deliberate on the two applications before them this evening. So I believe Keplinger Freeman is representing the owners for this. This is in the MX3 Zone District at 155 Gifford Street. The major site plan review is MASPR-25-06, and the resubdivision is R-25-15.
Thank you, Jake. Vincent with Keplinger Freeman Associates, 6320 Fly Road, East Syracuse. That was a great intro, appreciate it. So we were before the zoning board. We received two zoning variances as they relate to the second story of the building and some of the facade work that was being proposed. Both of those were approved, as Jake said. Moving on to tonight's agenda, we're looking for the resubdivision site plan review. The resubdivision, pretty straightforward. There's six current lots. Rescue Mission owns the existing 155 Gifford Street, which is that gray building to the left, a parcel to the south of that which houses their parking lot, and then the existing vacant lot to the east, and then there are several city-owned lots to the south where you see that orange building right now. We'll be recombining all those lots into a single entity owned and operated by Rescue Mission. So that covers the subdivision. As it relates to the site plan review, as you can see, we're proposing a 40,000 square foot, approximately 4,000 square foot facility to house offices, commercial businesses, and storage for the stores. The main tenant being the 315 boutique thrifty shopper, which will be the leftmost store of that orange block along Seymour. The other two tenants are vacant at the moment, and then north of that large square is the storage that will be used for all thrifty shoppers, but mostly used for the 315 thrifty shopper store. So I think the best way to move forward is I'll go counterclockwise around the site plan, starting on Seymour, as I started to describe. If you could zoom in, that would be great. So starting on Seymour, we're doing several right-of-way improvements along with the facade of the building, which I can show you at the end after we get around the building here. So street trees, if you can go to actually L400, four sheets forward, I think that'll help illustrate everything. So we're doing right-of-way improvements. We've got the driveway entrance there coming off Seymour. Exiting would be a right-only directional, as Seymour right now is a one-way street. And then that'll be our parking lot as well, taking into account all the mixed-use nature of the building, parking adjacency to bus stops, that's the approximate amount of parking that we need, and will also service the commercial as well as the offices of the building. Yeah, this is perfect, thank you. So if you could just zoom in on Seymour again, we have our planting along Seymour in the right-of-way as well as the required landscape buffer. No, you're good. So we'll be screening the parking lot per city regulations as well as beautifying Seymour as it is today. Not much is going on in Granger, so we'll skip north to Gifford, if you could just go plant north. The building obviously does extend from Seymour to Gifford. The existing parking lot adjacent to the existing 155 Gifford Street will remain the same, and then the building will be placed next to that parking lot. Minor improvements to what you see today, some planting, some sidewalk repair as it relates to the construction of the building as well as old curb cuts. And then if you proceed to the east, we have West Anadaga Facing. This is a bio-retention facility for the stormwater as it relates to the project. This all drains to this area. The old benefits are green infrastructure, bio-retention, and then ultimately makes its way to Anadaga Creek. That's been explored with the city engineering, and they're in general improvement with what's proposed here. The West Anadaga Street will have an ornamental fence, will have wood fence along Gifford Street, and a replacement chain-link fence along Anadaga Creek. Anadaga Creek here, hard to tell, but is actually 12 feet down due to an old foundation from a building that existed here a while ago. So there is access to the creek, but obviously there's no direct access, so we've partitioned that off. And then I think it would be best if you go to the other package and go to the architectural renderings, so we can actually see what this looks like. And each of those tenants has their own dedicated entrance. I'm gonna zoom out maybe a little bit to help it load. Yeah, there it goes. So that's the general layout of the site. A lot of work went into the zoning appeal in terms of glazing on the building and whatnot to make it really look like a new building would fit in with the area, complement 155 Gifford Street. And then we have, I can go through really quick, we did receive comments from the zoning office. The plans that I just showed you addressed most of those. You know, sewers will address with a SWIP. Asking for fencing, reviewed the fencing. We are asking for a six-foot fence along West Anadaga Street to prevent jumping. All pavers, we won't have any pavers in the right-of-way, it's all gonna be stamped crete. There are bike racks located on the new building within the private development, not in the public way. We will have sea-used soils for all trees, and the rest are general permit comments.
Was there one comment about a tree, trees in general, but a tree in terms of sightline?
There was a concern regarding a tree being close to the Seymour and West Anadaga that's since been moved.
Okay.
That's one right corner.
Yeah, and we're away from the marker as well, yeah.
Thank you.
That's been addressed in the most recent set. So a little bit more of the visualization of the building, these are the elevations. So the north one here, or top one, is Gifford Street. There is no access along Gifford Street, but we've made concerted efforts with the zoning board to provide the glazing that's needed in the code, to make that look as inviting as possible, but because of the nature of the business, there's no cross-access through the building there, and everything is fronted on. If you go one more view down, this is the Seymour side, you'll see the 315 on the left there, that's that entrance, the second entrance on Seymour, and then if you scroll to the right, a little difficult to see, but you'll have that third entrance for the West Anadaga Street tenant. I think that's a pretty broad overview. I can get into specifics if there's any questions, but I'll turn it back to you guys.
Let's check. Any questions for the applicant from the commission members?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So I understand there's a metal building that's being demolished, that's the one that's there as sort of an extension on the main building right now?
Yes.
That will become what looks like sort of a courtyard kind of area between the two buildings, is that correct?
It'll be green space, but yes, I neglected to, that is their maintenance building right now, it's a garage, and that will be demolished, yes.
Right, okay. And so do you anticipate people accessing both buildings, or by and large, there's only going to be customers going to one of the two? I'm just curious about that because of circulation pattern around those buildings, it's kind of weird with all the one-way streets, and the parking lots don't communicate. So there's one parking lot that apparently is for the new building, and the old parking lot off of Gifford Street is primarily for the existing building?
Yes.
And so you anticipate customers not going to both buildings, or?
The existing 155 building will remain offices for Rescue Mission, and is dedicated parking for that facility for their, for office use.
So that'll be like staff only and visitors, et cetera.
Staff, yep.
So you really anticipate two different uses for the buildings, and not all the circulation between the two?
No, no. The intent is that the parking lots are separate. You have a more public parking lot for those visiting the commercial businesses at the WEB, Mission Exchange Building, and then 155 Gifford will remain offices and staff parking for the 155 building.
And what's gonna be going on in the green space between the new building and the Anadaga Creek? Is that just gonna be open green space?
That is just open green space. As I said, it's fully fenced. It will be for Rescue Mission's use. It will not be, it'll be public-facing in the sense that you have transparency from West Anadaga Street, but ultimately, it's not open to the public.
Right. Thank you.
Are there questions for the applicant?
I just want to confirm, the Anadaga Street triangle, for lack of a better word, is also gonna accommodate the drainage and retention?
Yes. Yep, so you've got the bio-retention, and I failed to mention there is subsurface drainage underneath the parking lot on the plan left here, underneath the parking lot. Because of the size of the building, we had to split.
I just have one more question, I guess primarily for staff, just out of curiosity. West Anadaga Street is listed as the frontage street for the project? I'm just curious about that because, I mean, the access to the building is off of Seymour Street, so I'm just curious why West Anadaga Street would be listed as a frontage street? Off of Seymour, isn't it? I mean, I don't know how good the sort of, Anadaga just works.
Visible entrance on Anadaga.
I could take a step at this as well, because we've been through this process with the city on numerous occasions. The parking was pulled, the original plans did have parking off West Anadaga, but they were removed per city request for beautification requirements, not requirements, I should say, requests.
It's not a big issue, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
So I believe Nate reviewed this, and I was just asking with him, but a primary side has to be selected, and that primary frontage was selected in this manner, even though there's actually other public frontages?
And also important to note, there is a huge 30-inch sanitary line that runs just adjacent to the bio-retention area, so moving the building any farther east was not possible, otherwise we'd be building on top of that trunk line.
Additional questions for the applicant? I guess we're good, thank you. Are there any individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward, provide your name, address, and comments. Sure. Come to the microphone, please, and?
My name is Shane Seymour, and presently, I am only here under terms of occupancy. I have no permanent domicile or place of residence. As the case may be, if I may summarily just please prioritize a moment, I plan to be in attendance Wednesday if there should be any questions with regards to what I have to say for the common council. So though, tonight, as it would be, I've begun the completion of a non-immigrant visa, and I have here also the passport equivalent with instructions for foreign applicants, domestically in the US, but for passport equivalent of what I'm in the process of completing a non-immigrant visa. And so though also here, there are the preliminary terms which I had brought with me into Canada and had obtained from the Canadian government before returning to the US here, and I have also the document, signed document, from the Canadian ministry delegate and I that these original terms which I'd received from the Canadian government's interest. And then now though, since having been locally here involved with your community, again, the passport equivalent.
So if you could sort of focus on the project?
Right, and I have, and as far as that, again, was just to prioritize a bit before Wednesday's common council. But with regards to tonight's agenda, here are some unsigned documents, just general information that I've gotten from some of your providers locally. I believe it's Catholic charities here. So it's just an issue I think maybe you'd want to call to order with regards to this project, because as far as any issue over future utilities, you might be aware that the Salvation Army, and for instance, the YMCA, they provide housing and further very, you know, much greater extent, utilities to their tenants and to their interested parties who at times are, you know, in the past or present or future, have been in the instance where for missions work or for shelters and what otherwise might be relevant. But there could be a question with regards to how you intend to provide these utilities for your next project, for your project here tonight on Seymour, Gifford, and Granger. But I just, again, so some of it does pertain specifically to what I'd hoped to address Wednesday, and I happened to browse it preliminarily, and so I just thought that it would be something that everybody could consider, because there are places, of course, architecturally, I also took note of the fact that the plans for construction with the Seymour building are significantly different from the plans with construction for the other project, well, the complementary project with Gifford. And again, as far as those utilities issues go, there are those here that you are, you know, with temporary provision.
Thirty seconds, sir.
No, they are entirely without utilities, and to extend these same sort of privileges or entitlements could become a problem in the future.
Thank you. Are there other individuals who wish to speak in favor of the application? If so, come forward, please. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward, provide your name, address, and comments. We have no additional, yes?
Sago, sago. Hiungat Ga Halunkas. My name is Ga Halunkas. I am a clan mother, ancient bear clan, Iroquois Confederacy. I actually, this is my first time coming here, first of all, and as I sat and I listened to the gentleman talk about the plans that he had here, and whether or not I'm in favor and opposition, I guess mine would actually be, it's not that I'm in opposition, I'm also in favor, of course, you know, with homelessness, you know, on a rampage. I myself was homeless quite a few times here, right? And as Unkuai Hui, right, we are never supposed to be removed from our land, all right? So I'm gonna bring it back to the beginning here, all right? When these projects take place, do you get consent from the Anadagas? Do you get environmental impact statements done? Do you have their consent to even do this from the indigenous people here? I'm also United Tribal Nations representative in the UN, so I would like to know what kind of a permission you have when you go forward with these projects, because see, I'm also a victim of the work you guys do, okay? I'm fighting for my mother's home that you foreclosed on and you're trying to remove me from. And again, as I stated, you cannot remove an Indian from their land. Those are violations, okay? The law that I stand on is the Gayanala Goa, that is the great binding law of peace. That is the supreme law of this land. That is our law, and it supersedes any of this. We are still here. We still exist, and we are still living, and we are still thriving. But I can tell you right now that with projects, not just this in particular, but projects, we get pushed out. We get told that we have to leave, or we don't have any say on our land anymore. This is what we're being told. So me, what my job is as a United Tribal Nations representative in the United Nations that represents the Ganyakahaga, I have to speak, and I have to let you know that from now on, when we move forward, there must be consent given by the indigenous people here. And that is a full consent from all the people, and this is the one thing that we work on, and this is law here. If you'd like, I have the paperwork and I can provide you with that. But I love the idea of what you're doing, I'm not saying I'm not for it against it, but there needs to be some respect given to the first people here. Now I'll go.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition or otherwise to the project? If so, please come forward. I don't believe we have any additional speakers, so we'll close the public comment on this application and proceed to consider action. I think you had indicated that our seeker has been addressed previously.
That's correct.
And at the body. So we will not focus on that, but we have R-25-15 and MASPR-2506 to consider this evening, taking the resubdivision proposal first. Is there a motion for action on this resubdivision?
We move approval of R-25-15 as presented with one special condition beyond the general condition. conditions, a special condition being filing the re-subdivision with the county clerk's office within 62 days of approval.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this motion. If there's no need for discussion, then all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? There's an approval for the re-subdivision, R-25-15. And we move now to the major site plan review that was just presented for MASPR-25-06. Is there a motion for this item?
I move approval of MASPR-25-06 with three special conditions beyond the general conditions. One is a special condition regarding the 12 covered bike spaces for the 15% reduction, which I believe has been addressed by the applicant in the discussion. The other two special conditions are regarding the permits needing to be completed within 12 months and all other conditions met within 18 months of approval.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this motion before is for the major site plan review. If there's no discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? That would give us approval for MASPR-25-06. Thank you. We move to our next item or a rescheduled, reordered order.
You know, we'll stay in the same order on the agenda now that council's here. We answer new business this evening. First up is a re-subdivision, R-25-16 at 236 Shonard Street. This is owned by the Greater Syracuse Property Development Corporation in the R4 Zone District.
Good evening, I'm, excuse me, Terry Luckett from the Syracuse Land Bank, 1941 South Stellina Street. This re-subdivision application requests the split of an 83-foot times 132-foot vacant lot into two equally sized buildable lots. The land bank is applying to New York State HCR to build 25 single-family houses and 10 two-family houses in the near west side. We're going to build two of those single-family houses on these two lots. And the single houses will all be owner occupied. That's all.
Questions for the applicant? Apparently not, I have a somewhat related question indicated in here that you're going to be applying to HCR for funding. Is the application going in yet or is it pending or?
We're still writing it.
Ah, okay.
We have to get all of this settled first before we can go in.
Understood, okay.
If I could just follow up on that, so have you designated the other 23 properties yet or where are you?
Yeah, I have a map if you'd like to see it. You want to see it?
Uh, sure.
So scattered sites.
So Terry, you might want to give us a quick overview of how the Ahab program works and the scattered sites with the homeownership piece.
How it works, we're going to hire a developer to build the houses. I don't know exactly what it is that you want to know. They're going to be, they'll provide a subsidy that'll fill the gap between the price that the owner occupant can pay and what it costs to build. So the Ahab program is for that, filling the gap.
And it's a requirement, I believe, that the occupant remain in the home for 10 years.
Correct.
I guess, are these all going to be townhouses? I mean, we're looking at a re-sub, so we don't know what the design for the houses are yet.
These ones are going to be single-family houses.
Are all going to be single homes?
Okay. The two families, I'm not sure if they've been designed yet, whether they're going to be townhomes or whether they'll be one over the other. Not sure yet.
Okay, right. But those details aren't necessary for the application?
They're working on it now, that's part of the application.
Okay, thank you.
Be determined. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Are there individuals who wish to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come to the podium, provide your name, address, and comments.
I'll comment that any public comments should be directed towards the project. Any questions, comments, concerns specifically about the project, we'll be timing you, but I will cut you off if you're not talking about the project. Hold on, you have to approach the mic, sir.
I would just like to mention that I, person Shane Seymour, that is again, and I am here under only just occupancy, no residence or claim of domicile. And that though, I would be as opposed to the major factor, again, being sort of to the same issue as the utilities, that through public assistance and social services, there's great reluctance to provide for the kinds of transportation needs that are necessary to maintain these sorts of premises and the divide between what social security provides as compared to social services and public assistance. I have here the documents and I can show you where I've been denied these kinds of basic fundamental...
Excuse me, you need to stop or I will have you removed. You're not respecting, hold on, you are not respecting the reasoning for this meeting. I gave you strict instruction on what you could comment and question about. You're not sticking to that. I'm going to ask you to stop or I will ask you to leave the building or have you escorted out.
This is the last address I was assigned and before coming here. And I have your social, your social services application here that...
Thank you.
I just was as opposed, that's all.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this re-subdivision application? If so, please come forward, provide your name, address, and comments on the re-subdivision. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the re-subdivision application? If so, please come forward to offer your comments. I don't see any additional speakers, so we will close the public comment on this application. We will turn to our seeker review.
Has, have all the board members had a chance to review the EAF Part 1 prepared by the applicant and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part 2 prepared by staff and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Does anyone believe the proposed action will have a moderate to large impact under seeker?
No.
Having determined there will be no moderate to large impacts, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration and to prepare the Part 3 EAF accordingly.
Thank you. Is there such a motion on the seeker review?
I make a motion to issue a negative seeker declaration.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this motion. If there's no discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The seeker motion is approved for R-25-16 and we can now proceed to act upon the re-subdivision proposal itself. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve R-25-16 with one special condition beyond the general conditions, that being filing the re-subdivision with the county clerk's office within 62 days of approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on this motion now for the re-subdivision. If there's no need for discussion, then all in favor of this motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The re-subdivision for R-25-16 is approved and we move to our next application.
Okay, next up under new business is Phase 1 of the Syracuse Development Center, Z-2894. This is a project plan review since this is now a PDD Zone District owned by the City of Syracuse applicant is Russell C. Albany's. Just to tee this up, this is a multi-phase review, so we did sketch plan for 800 South Wilbur Ave, rear and 802 South Wilbur. That was conducted at the December 2nd, 2024 meeting. During that meeting, the planning commission evaluated all four phases of the project and issued a negative seeker declaration for the type 1 actions involved. So this evening, they'll just introduce Phase 1 and we do not have to perform seeker. So I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Joe McNinch, SWBR 309 South Franklin Street. I am here representing the Albany's organization and Russell Albany's. Shane O'Connor from TDK could not make it tonight, so I'm going to do my best at being civil engineer. But I will, I prepared myself a speech because once nerves get a hold, I will forget everything. So thank you for your time and consideration regarding this proposed development, 800 South Wilbur. Again, I'm Joe McNinch, project architect and project manager with SWBR. I'm also here with Lowell Neimetz from Home Headquarters, one of the co-developers on the project. Tonight, we're here before you to review project, project plan review, the SDC Phase 1 project. We've previously received our PDD zoning designation and planning plan approval. And I just want to make a couple notes that we have been working with the city staff at all phases of this project to sort of bring life to the Ring Road and that sort of thing. The Loop Road is being developed by the City of Syracuse and their consultants CNS Engineering. So we've been working pretty seamlessly with those folks. But we feel that we have, we're bringing forth a project that meets the needs of Syracuse, its vision for the development site and ultimately meets the needs of the immediate community in which it resides. By adopting the planned development district, future developments have been afforded the flexibility they will need to produce the projects that have been aligned with the city's vision for this parcel. The PDD will allow us uses that were presented in the master plan that we previously have reviewed, but while limiting uses that would have a potential adverse effect on the neighboring communities. One of the, one of the positive side effects of the PDD for us is it really affords us to provide the homeownership opportunity program density that we're finding down there at the South Wilbur area. So this, this Phase 1 plan with the Albany's organization in Home Headquarters, again, is largely an affordable housing development. As you come in off of South Wilbur, you're met with 27 multi-story, for-sale, owner-occupied townhouses. They are side-by-side units, not over-under units. Each one of those units would be provided with, you know, typical, you know, a single-family home, they're three-bedroom units, living room, kitchen. Some of them do have a garage, a majority of them don't, just due to the difficult grade. But the nine units that are along the Loop Road there, there's like a circle with a three, three and three, those, all three of those have garages underneath them. But predominantly, the Phase 1 project is affordable housing, workforce, family-type housing. There are a wide range of housing types. There is studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and three-bedroom units. Those will, the buildings A and B there are being owned and occupied by the Albany's organization. They do have their own management team as well, so they will, they will also be the managers of these properties. The, some of the amenities in the multifamily housing buildings will have ample community spaces, community rooms, fitness center, a handful of lounge spaces. They really prioritized the exterior green space in these park-like settings that take advantage of the views back towards the city. There will be children at this development, so there's playgrounds and really active community spaces. Future phases would include additional affordable housing, but also market, market-rate housing opportunities. I know that we're kind of talking about the Phase 1 here, but I just wanted to paint a picture of that northwestern portion of the site. The, as part of this project, or you know, project proper, the right-of-way along sort of the Page East there, we've been developing that with the City of Syracuse and that will incorporate a two-way bike lane, street trees, sidewalks, some green space, obviously sight lighting and that sort of thing. We've met numerous times with the fire department to really nail the design here and we've worked well with them to get their, make sure their apparatus can navigate the site. I think that's sort of hits the high level of, a level of my, my presentation here tonight. Just a couple of quick notes, we do have, you know, the site plan is identifying trash pickup internal to the site completely behind the buildings. Our utilities are also site-mounted and behind the buildings. These buildings really are pushed up to the right-of-way, sort of in line with the zoning requirements of the previous MX4 zoning, but we are taking a lot of the cues from that previous zoning forward on these buildings. They are four stories en masse, they're tall buildings, but you know, to create the density that we were looking for here, that was sort of a byproduct of that. The buildings set into grade, they're sort of a walkout style, the front, the, you know, the Ring Road facades are approximately a story lower than the back, so the, you know, primarily the residents would access the buildings from the back, which would be, we'll call it level 1, while the roadside would actually be level 0, for instance. So if you were view the site or the exterior elevations, you'll kind of, you can get that picture painted for you. Yeah, we have, like I said, a bunch of, you know, with these plaza spaces, we really wanted to prioritize the experience of entering the site and sort of navigating the site. One of the things that this development also endeavors to do is provide an accessible route within the development. Obviously, grade is a huge factor here, so we did our, we did our very best to create an accessible experience for the residents that are going to be living in the site. We were talking in the last application, this is also going to be a New York State Homes and Community Renewal funded project through an HFA 4% bond deal. And with that comes, you know, the state's long list of regulations and guidelines as well, so yeah, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for the applicant on this application?
You know, this is interesting. We've been through this now several times and we need to try to keep not asking the same questions.
Sure.
Because I know that there's comments that keep coming up about, you know, connection with the zoo and neighborhoods, et cetera. We've talked about all that, et cetera. So I assume those, those comments are all being recorded and are in the file, et cetera. So I'll try not to get back to the same, you know, the same kinds of things. A little bit curious about a couple of things. First off, I wonder the way the townhouses are broken up, sometimes there are groups of two, three, four. Is that break between the townhouses is because of elevation? Is that...
Elevation is one of the factors, but really it was a client-driven direction to, to lessen the amount of units that were attached to each other to create these smaller chunks of buildings. It certainly adds for a more pleasing experience than seeing 12 houses lined up next to each other, but it was really an owner goal.
Great, okay, good. And I was curious, one of the comments in the department comments from forestry is about the infrastructure and potential problems with infrastructure and plannings, et cetera, and whether or not infrastructure could be placed in common corridors or whatnot. And in that comment, they mentioned gas lines. And it just occurred to me, because this is not something that we talked about and it's not something that's part of really what we regulate, but I'm just kind of curious, is there going to be gas service there or is everything going to be electric?
These developments will be completely and totally electric. There will be no gas on the site. I, I will say that I can't speak for the city's project if they are going to run gas throughout the loop as like a, you know, a public utility offering, but our development does not intend to have any gas consumption as part of the New York State rules. But our development does not intend to have any gas consumption as part of the New York State rules.
Thank you. Additional questions for the applicant? Anything additional, Barry? Okay, thank you very much. Are there individuals who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please come forward, provide your name, address, comments.
Sago, sago, yungatz, gahalunqas. Actually, I do have a couple of questions, because I'm a little familiar with this, where this is at. If I'm not mistaken, this is actually right there. It's the old abandoned facility up there. Okay. So my question would be, that's actually a very big piece of land that's right there, and that has been abandoned for some time. I do know that previously, before it was abandoned, because I used to work up there, okay? So I know what it was used for, all right? I know all of the horrible stories, okay, that actually went along with that, okay, over a period of time that it sat up there. My question would be, one, environmental impact statement, okay? Another one would be, for what you're talking about home-wise, because we're going through such a crisis right now with homelessness and everything going on, when you're talking about putting all of this housing in there, what is this price range that you're actually talking about using? Because of the poverty that is so hard here, right? And it seems like the more and more I hear about all these projects that are popping up around here, it's like, it's almost like a push. It's a push to really get out the people in the low income to kind of put them in a whole different bracket, which is not maybe something like this. So that would be my question. What would be the price range of something like this? Because it is on the west side. And now, west side, we already know, has a very high rate of poverty. So are you going to put really nice houses that are going to be impossible for them to pay for? And if they do, do they have to bend over backwards and then lose their home? You know, what's in place for them to make sure something that, like that doesn't happen? So what is the price range, you know?
If you know the answer to the question, you're free to answer it, but it is not relevant to the criteria for project plan, project plan review.
And I don't know the answer to that question.
And it's not anything discussed in the packet.
Exactly.
That's okay. I mean, you don't have to. I mean, because I can actually write it up, and I can actually request that you tell me anyways, because I'm going to actually request that there be sonar done, because see, my mother was a survivor of residential schools, okay? So I know that that particular spot is not very far from the residential school that was here in Syracuse, okay? So I am going to request that a sonar be done, and that the grounds actually be looked over to make sure that there are no, no graves, nothing in there, okay? So if I need to, I'll actually, when the time comes, all right, I'll find out what the pricing is. I mean, you can tell me, you don't have to tell me, but I'm going to find out anyways. It's not a big deal.
We don't have that information, but thank you for raising it.
Yes. All right. Well, thank you.
Are there other individuals seeking to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wishing to...
I would just like to say that I actually find it very economical, that you don't even want to tell me what the price range is, or don't you know?
We don't know it.
Indicated, I just don't know.
We don't know.
It's not information that we have. Is there anyone wishes, who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? If so, please come to the podium, offer your comments after providing your name and address for the record. I don't see any additional people rising to speak, so we'll close public comment on this application, and proceed to the project plan review. And as in, I think, staff had indicated that the seeker work had been completed in December.
We already done seeker.
So we just need to consider the project plan review for this item. So it's Z-2894. Is there a motion or action on this?
Move approval of Z-2894 with eight special conditions beyond the general conditions. The first three special conditions, as given on page 82 of the packet, are with respect to the affordability requirement. Conditions 4 through 6 are related to construction issues. Condition 7 is a reminder to the applicant that before any design work is done on a light industrial building, to make sure that you connect with the zoning staff to address any issues that may be relevant. And then condition 8 is that you should review and address the conditions that are given in the Onondaga County Board, Planning Board relative to this project. There are four conditions that are listed on page 178 of the packet.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Then discussion on this motion for Z-2894. If there's no discussion, then all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The project plan review is approved for Z-2894, and we move to another application this evening.
Next up is a zoning map amendment, Z-2891 at 214 Hazelwood Ave. The owner, current owner is Lisa Gary. The applicant is actually coming from the City of Syracuse zoning administrator, and I'll introduce this and explain. The zoning map amendment is being proposed to correct an error on the official zoning map and to ensure its accuracy. The county tax map and the rezone zoning map were previously published showing this privately-owned parcel as part of public right-of-way. So it wasn't ever assigned an official zone district. So this process is to correct that and document that appropriately.
From time to time, we come across these items, so we fix them as we go, and, okay. Thank you. Is the applicant here, or do we need...
The applicant is here.
We don't need the owner.
Jake is the applicant.
Okay. Kind of fine one at that.
Yes.
Any questions regarding this zoning map amendment beyond what Jake's already explained to us?
I did a double take when I saw the picture of this house, because first when I saw it, it looked so much like the house that we dealt with last month on Hazelwood, that I thought you were trying to slip a fast one on us.
Yeah. I actually, I'm like, this isn't the same one we...
That's exactly what I thought.
But yeah, I did, I kind of did the same thing. I'm like, no, this is, this is correct.
Same neighborhood, different, same street, different dwelling. Okay.
Hopefully, our map maintenance will lighten here soon, but we've got a couple others after this one.
So if there are no questions, I will ask, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this application? And if so, to please come forward, providing their name and address and comments on this zoning map amendment. And I will also ask if there is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed zoning map amendment. If so, please come to the podium. We have no speakers on this one. We'll close public comment, and we'll turn to our seeker review. Hazelwood Ave.
Has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part 1 contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone taken a look at the sections of the EAF Part 2 contained in your packet?
Yes.
Yes.
Do any of the commissioners believe the proposed action will have a moderate-to-large impact under seeker?
No.
Having determined that there will be no moderate-to-large impacts, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration and prepare the EAF Part 3 accordingly.
Thank you. Is there a motion to that effect for seeker?
Make a motion to issue a negative seeker declaration?
Thank you.
Second.
Second discussion on this seeker motion. If we have no discussion, then all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The seeker motion carries, and we can now proceed to action on the zoning map amendment itself. Is there a motion here?
Make a motion to approve Z-2891 as a recommendation to the common council for affirmative action.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
And is there discussion on this motion? If not, then all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? So that recommendation will move to the council. For final disposition, we have another zoning map amendment. We have a couple, I guess, coming up.
Next up, same variety, zoning map amendment, Z-2892 at 134 North Monticello Drive. Same problem, the county tax map and the rezone map were published showing this privately-owned parcel as public right-of-way. Therefore, we would like to formally assign it as R-1.
Thank you. Do any of the commission members need any additional information or clarification before proceeding to act upon this zoning map amendment?
All set. Thank you.
In that case, we can turn...
Ready. Have each of you had a...
I need to ask, sorry, my apologies. Are there any individuals wishing to speak in favor of this second zoning map amendment on North Monticello? I see no one rising. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this proposed zoning map amendment on North Monticello? Again, no one, so we'll close public comment and now turn to our seeker review. Thank you.
Have any of the commissioners had a chance to review the EAF Part 1, prepared by the applicant and contained in your packet?
Yes.
And has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part 2, prepared by staff and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Do any of you believe the proposed action will have a moderate-to-large impact under seeker?
No.
Having determined there will be no moderate-to-large impacts, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration and prepare the Part 3 EAF accordingly.
Thank you. Is there a motion to that effect for seeker?
Make a motion to issue a negative seeker declaration?
Second.
You both.
Discussion on this seeker motion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The seeker motion carries, and we may now proceed to act upon the zoning map amendment itself. Is there a motion for action here?
Make a motion to approve Z-2892 with a recommendation to the common council for affirmative action.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Discussion on this motion before us for North Monticello. If there's no need for discussion, then all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? So this is approved, and it also moves to the common council for final action. We have an additional zoning map amendment.
Last one, we're back to the couple that we are familiar with. A zoning map amendment, Z-2893 at 230 Hudson Street. This is due to a re-subdivision that was done just months prior to adopting the official rezone map. So this is just to correct that, like many others that we've done to date.
Thank you. Is everyone clear on this one, or is there any additional information needed or clarification needed before we act? Okay. In that case, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this zoning map amendment? If so, please come to the podium, provide your name, address, comments. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this zoning map amendment, please come... Oh, I spoke too quickly.
I'm Lydia Montgomery. I'm the owner, and I just want to say...
Sorry, your application was the last one.
Oh, that's no problem. I was interested to hear, and in favor. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this zoning map amendment? Please come forward. And we will also ask, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed zoning map amendment? Please come to the podium and provide your comments. I don't see any additional speakers, so we'll close the public comment and turn our attention to our seeker review.
I know. Really. Ah, has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part 1, prepared by the applicant and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Has everyone had a chance to review the EAF Part 2, prepared by staff and recommended to you and contained in your packet?
Yes.
Yes.
Do any of you believe the proposed action will have a moderate-to-large impact under seeker?
No.
Having determined there will be no moderate-to-large impacts, I recommend that the commission make a negative declaration and prepare the Part 3 EAF accordingly.
Thank you. Is there a motion to that effect?
Make a motion to issue a negative seeker declaration?
Second.
You both. Discussion on this seeker motion? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The seeker motion carries, and we may now act, develop a recommendation on this zoning map amendment for the council. Is there a motion for that purpose?
Make a motion to approve Z-2893 with a recommendation for affirmative action to the common council.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? That is approved for Z-2893. We've completed our work, but it's not the end of the story. It goes to the common council, and they have the final say, so just so you know the next step there.
Then it'll be fully legitimate.
Well, if your item had to be the last on the agenda, I'm glad we didn't have a really, really long meeting. And thank you for your patience. Any additional business to come before the commission tonight?
Nope, that's it.
Can I ask staff to include officer elections on our May 27th agenda?
It'll be Tuesday, right, after, because of the holiday?
Tuesday, Monday.
Oh, okay.
That'll be great. My weekend...
Well, we know we're going to get it. The question is, when are we going to get it?
Friday. Hopefully Friday.
Sure.
So if there is no further business, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. We are adjourned until the 27th, the Tuesday.
Great.